Meeting of September 22, 2025. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus?
Present.
Commissioner Lanson is absent. Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Vice Chair Kettlehut?
Here.
Chair Ferris?
Here. Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director Fabiola Zalaya Melker. Are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
There are no additional information or supplemental packets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on the evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must fill out a speaker card in chambers or click Request to Speak on the Agenda to receive instructions before public comments portion of the agenda is called. The Speaker's remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole, not to an individual Commissioner or staff member. Unless otherwise provided by the Commission, speakers are limited to five minutes. The screen will show you the remaining time you have. At this time, we have one member who is speaking publicly on Zoom, Susan Martinez.
Susan Martinez has not logged into Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Go past that part of the agenda. Next, we have the Consent Calendar for the minutes of September 8, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting and the 2026 Planning Commission Schedule. I understand the clerk has a correction to the minutes?
Yep, my apologies. The last page had adjournment. The year of the September 11th attacks should be 2001. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar can be adopted, given we have two items on the consent calendar. It can be adopted in one motion, both the minutes and the and the planning schedule for next year. It could be approved in one motion unless someone wants to pull something for discussion. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent calendar? If not, does someone want to make a motion to approve the consent calendar? Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut?
I move that we approve the minutes of September 26, 2025, and we approve the 2026 Planning Commission Schedule and find that the action is not a project as defined by SEQA.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If not, please call the roll or the vote.
Commissioner Bus?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Abstain.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes.
Chair Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 3-0. Commissioner Lanson absent. Commissioner McMahon abstaining.
Okay, thank you. We will go to our public hearings, and let's open the hearing for item 7A. Will the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A, Special Use Permit SUP 2025-70008 to allow scheduled indoor live entertainment consisting of band, comedy, DJ, and karaoke performances between the hours of 8:00 PM and 11:00 PM Monday through Friday and 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM Saturday and Sunday at an existing 3,097 square foot winery and tasting room, Naboo Wines, located within an existing industrial complex in the M1 industrial park zone, and find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA) pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities located at 2649 Townsgate Road, Unit 200. The applicant is Gregory Barnett, Naboo Wines.
Thank you. Presenting on behalf of staff is Community Development Department Tech 2 Nicole Katz.
All right. Good evening, Chair Ferris, Planning Commissioners, and members of the public. Tonight, we're here to present our request from Gregory Barnett of Naboo Wines. I'm joined by city staff from the Community Development Department, the Ventura County Fire Department, and the applicant to answer questions that the Commission may have regarding the request for live entertainment at Naboo Wines. The item before the Planning Commission for this evening's consideration is to allow scheduled indoor live entertainment consisting of band, comedy, DJ, and karaoke performances between the hours of 8:00 PM and 11:00 PM Monday through Friday and 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM Saturday and Sunday at an existing 3,097 square foot winery and tasting room. The subject property is located within the industrial park zone. Provided on your screen is a vicinity map depicting the subject site with a red asterisk. The map on your screen here provides a closer aerial view of the site with the subject site depicted within the red lines. Naboo Wines is located within Suite 200, which is the building most immediately adjacent to Townsgate Road within the industrial complex. The land uses immediately adjacent to the subject property include the US 101 freeway to the north, professional office buildings to the south, the US 101 freeway on and off ramps to the east, and professional office and industrial buildings to the west. Part 1000 Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2105, any request for live entertainment in the M1 Zone requires the review and approval of a special use permit by the Planning Commission. Additionally, 1000 Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2803C, grants the Planning Commission the authority to approve special use permits if the Commission can make the following five fundings: that the use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan or redevelopment plan; that the use complies with all applicable laws, regulations, and policies, including the 1000 Oaks Municipal Code; that the use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare; that the project conforms with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act; and that the use is a compatible land use with uses in the vicinity. On July 22, 2014, the Community Development Department issued an approval to Naboo Wines for SUP 2014-70158, which allowed for the alternating use of parking and for the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages for a proposed wine manufacturing warehouse operation in the M1 Zone. This special use permit was approved administratively as 1000 Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2105, allows for alcoholic beverage production and storage with incidental tasting and retail services in the M1 Zone, subject to an administrative special use permit approvable by the Community Development Director. Within the floor plan associated with this SUP, no stage was depicted in the customer area. In August of 2014, Naboo Wines opened their business to the public and has been in continual operation since at 2649 Townsgate Road, Unit 200. Naboo Wines has an active City of 1000 Oaks business license and a Type 2 license from the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. On March 26, 2025, Gregory Barnett of Naboo Wines submitted the subject special use permit. The project was properly noticed per the requirements of 1000 Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-12.202. During the notification period, staff received three emails from members of the public and one phone call. Of the emails, two were general inquiries requesting updates on the project's status and one expressed support of the project. The phone call received from a business and property owner at 2629 Townsgate Road raised concerns about Naboo Wines patrons parking on his adjacent property. Staff worked with both the neighbor and the applicant to address the concern. As a result, staff incorporated conditions of approval into the proposed resolution requiring the applicant to implement measures preventing offsite parking. The applicant has agreed to these conditions. This image is taken at the street level off of Townsgate Road facing west, and it shows the front elevation of the tenant space. The red arrow points directly to Naboo Wines' location. This is a site plan of the entire industrial complex within which Naboo Wines is located. As seen within this drawing, Townsgate Road fronts the property running along the west side of the site. This complex contains several detached industrial buildings, which were approved by the City of 1000 Oaks Planning Commission on August 22, 1977, under Development Permit 77360. Before you on the screen is the floor plan of Naboo Wines. The tenant space is approximately 3,097 square feet, inclusive of the 1,344 square foot tasting room area and 120 square foot stage. The floor plan provided depicts the existing conditions of the tenant space. The request for live entertainment would be contained to the existing stage and tasting room area, all within the interior of the tenant space. As discussed at the beginning of the presentation, the Planning Commission is provided the authority to approve special use permits if five findings can be made. The first finding that must be made is that the proposed use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan or redevelopment plan. The property has an industrial low general plan land use designation. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan land use designation, as wineries with supportive retail and services are an allowable use within the industrial low designation. The site is not located with any specific plan or redevelopment plan. As such, the proposed use meets finding number one. The second finding that must be made is that the use complies with all applicable laws, regulations, and policies, including the 1000 Oaks Municipal Code. The applicant requests approval to allow live entertainment within an existing winery and tasting room. The winery and tasting room were originally permitted with a special use permit in July of 2014, and the proposed live entertainment does not alter this primary use. The current winery and tasting room operation is consistent with the site's applicable zoning code standards, as they detained their original special use permit in July of 2014, which contained the alternating use of parking and the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. The unpermitted stage and live entertainment are not currently consistent with the zoning code. However, with approval of this special use permit, they would be in compliance. Additionally, the project has been reviewed by other city departments and agencies for conformance with their applicable laws, regulations, and policies. These departments and agencies provided appropriate conditions of approval, which are contained within the resolution. As such, the proposed use meets finding number two. The third finding that must be made is that the project will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare. The request for live entertainment has been reviewed and approved by the Ventura County Fire Department, the City of 1000 Oaks Community Development and Public Works Departments, and the 1000 Oaks Police Department. With the incorporation of the conditions set forth by these departments and agencies, the project will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare. Therefore, the proposed use meets finding number three. The fourth finding that must be made is that the project has been reviewed in conformance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. Staff has determined that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA guidelines pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities. Section 15301 consists of the operation, repair, maintenance, permitting, leasing, licensing, or minor alteration of existing public or private structures, which involves negligible or no expansion of existing or former use. The project involves the allowance of scheduled indoor live entertainment as part of the business operations, retention of an existing stage, and increasing the size of the tasting room area and existing winery and tasting room, which is considered to be a negligible expansion of the existing use. Additionally, none of the exceptions to the categorical exemptions are applicable to this project. Therefore, the proposed use meets finding number four. The fifth finding that must be made is that the proposed use is compatible with land uses in the vicinity. The immediately surrounding land uses include the US 101 freeway to the north, professional office buildings to the south, the US 101 freeway on and off ramps to the east, and professional offices and industrial buildings to the west. Although there is a church located within an industrial building to the west of the project site at 2630 Townsgate Road, Suite A, the live entertainment will be contained entirely indoors approximately 315 feet away from the church. Furthermore, there are no immediately adjacent residences, hospitals, and schools. The nearest residential area, Village Homes POA, tract 2173, is located to the southwest of the winery and tasting room, with the closest residential dwelling approximately 1,230 feet away on the south side of Hampshire Road. As such, the proposed use is compatible with the immediately adjacent land use and meets finding number five. To conclude, after a comprehensive review of the project, staff has been able to determine that the project complies with the following required findings per Section 9-4.2803C of the 1000 Oaks Municipal Code. The project is consistent with the 1000 Oaks general plan and any applicable specific plan or redevelopment plan. The project complies with all applicable laws, regulations, and policies, including the 1000 Oaks Municipal Code. The project will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. And the project has been reviewed in conformance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. And finally, the proposed use at the proposed location will be compatible with land uses in the vicinity. Accordingly, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission finds that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities and to adopt a resolution approving special use permit 2025-70008 to allow scheduled indoor live entertainment consisting of band, comedy, DJ, and karaoke performances between the hours of 8:00 PM and 11:00 PM Monday through Friday and 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM Saturday and Sunday. Thank you for your attention, and that concludes my presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Let me go to the Commission. First, I'm going to ask if there are any ex parte communications to disclose. Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut?
Yes, I've had a few communications with Mr. Barnett about this.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments of the Commission for staff? Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehut?
Me again. I have a question, Nicole. So, assuming we approve this today, when would this SUP be effective?
This would be effective in 10 days after the appeal period has passed.
Any other questions? No? Okay, great. Thank you. Now, I'll ask the applicant or applicant's representative to speak. Can you come up to the podium, Gregory Barnett? If you could step to the podium, state your name and city of residence. You have 15 minutes for your presentation.
My name is Greg Barnett. I live in Willy Hills, California, and I am the I live in Woodland Hills, California, and I am the owner of Naboo Wines, and I'm here with my wife and co-owner, here to ask for support for this special use permit. If you're wondering what Naboo is, it's our production, where we first started in 2012, making wine from Napa and Malibu. Some people ask. Anyway, we've, are one of the very last wineries still producing wines here in the Malibu Coast Avia since all the fires. As you know, we've been approved since 2014, and we request to allow indoor entertainment and formalize our stage in the tasting room. This is our very small request to strengthen our business. This is something that's very important to our business model. Let's see, I think Nicole Katz has mentioned that we've addressed all the parking issues with our neighbors and signage, graphic designers, so I'll be making some signs for my neighbors. I did look up what CEQA meant, or CEQA, so that was interesting. Since we were required to stop doing live entertainment, our business, our profitability has in deep decline, and we are very grateful that we finally have this opportunity to present this request to you tonight. In short, our permit respects the quality, the character and area and provides a cultural, economic benefit to the community by supporting local music and arts. For these reasons, I respectfully urge your support for our special permit tonight, and we accept the conditions of approval.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just ask, are there any questions of the Commission of the applicant? Vice Chair Tyler Kettlehart.
Mr. Barnett?
Yeah.
There we go, now it's working. Can you describe for the Commission how you address the parking concerns with your neighbors?
Um, yeah, we, we have, we have a neighbor in an adjoining building that's outside of our park, and he wasn't sure if it was our customers that are parking there, but I told him that we are more than happy to put an A-frame sign right at their entrance and say no winery parking, you know, when we are having live entertainment. I mean, when we're not, it's very quiet, you know, it's, it's, you know, a couple here, a couple here during the day doing wine tasting.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. McMahon.
Generally, on a Friday or Saturday night, when you do have live music, how many patrons do you have?
Well, sometimes 30, sometimes 40, sometimes a little bit more than that. Depends. There's a lot of people doing live music in Westlake now. So, I mean, Louis', which was, what was that before? Bogies, so they, they've blown up, and there's Breakers now, and all these other opportunities, so people would kind of go from place to place. We do do a lot of singer-songwriter, so it's not like hard rock or anything like that. So that's a little different, different draw.
And what is the maximum capacity according to the fire department?
Currently set for 49, but apparently I was told that it could be more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, any other questions? Okay, thank you, you'll have a time to rebut at the end. Next, we're going to go to public comments. We have 10 public speakers this evening. Due to that, based on our time allotment, that means each speaker has four minutes. If you could then come up to the podium, state your name, city of residence, and then we'll go through the listing of it. First one, and I'm going to apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name. Ben Malkin, followed by Brian Hines.
My name is Ben Malkin. Thank you for this opportunity. I own and publish Caneo Valley Lifestyle Magazine, and when we started the magazine in 2015, one of our goals was to support local businesses, small businesses, and other things as well, like nonprofits. I met Greg Barnett in 2015, and he related to me his vision. He's a visionary. His vision was premium wines that he made himself, didn't just simply rebottle, but more importantly, to bring world-class popular music using world-class sound and everything else to the community. As it developed, it's become an institution for baby boomers and people younger than them who love music from the 60s, 70s, 80s and 90s. It's a wonderful, safe place in the community to go, and this is a community with a shortage of places to go for popular music and things like that and entertainment. You don't have to go to Los Angeles, you can stay right here. So I 100%, 1,000% support his vision, and I hope you do too.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the speaker? If not, we'll go to Brian Hines, followed by Jim Robertson.
Hello, my name is Brian Hines, I'm the owner of Borderline Bar and Grill, and the Borderline brand that still continues today. In 2018, when we went through that tragedy, Greg stepped up, and he and I were not friends at the time, I had never met him, I'd only heard of his establishment, and as he stepped up, he put together a fundraiser for the families and friends and everything that we needed at the time. And in that was live music. The fact that his establishment allows singer-songwriters, like he mentioned earlier, is a real great thing for the community, I believe, and I'm just completely in support of everything he's doing. I'm glad he's here today and didn't just give up like some people have, and I just want to thank him for being a friend, we're friends now. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. Any questions? If not, Jim, Jim Robertson, followed by Scott Berry.
My name is Jim Robertson, I live in Thousand Oaks, California. I am a retired producer, director of entertainment, and have been to all eight places in the Thousand Oaks Newbury Park area that put on music. I would tell you that Naboo Winery is probably one of the most entertaining and relaxing places to go. They have good music, they have great entertainment. The last Sunday of every month, they focus on one entertainer, and they have 12 people who sing songs about that entertainer, and a lot of them are very good. Then there's me. You need to know, I don't drink wine, but fortunately, they have Coke Zero, and I appreciate that a whole bunch. So, it's a great place, parking is good, the people are, it's one of the nicest places to go, and the music is produced very well, because I have done that a lot. I've never sent, signed any people up for their group, but I've watched all of their entertainers. They have, I would say 90, 95% of them are outstanding, and if you've never been there, you should go and see them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll go to Scott Berry, followed by Kyle Rohrbach.
Hi, my name is Scott Berry. I live in Newbury Park since 2002. I've worked previously for Bank of America and Countrywide. In 2013, as Bank of America was going through some downsizing, I began to look at what I was going to do next. And I've grown up in and around wine my entire life, have an uncle that has a vineyard up in Ukiah, up in Mendocino County, so it's just always been a big part of our life. One of the things that I looked at was establishing a winery, you know, trying to create my own brand, and, and ultimately decided, it's hard, it's way too hard. Lewis Perdue wrote a book in 1999 called, gotta say it right, because I always get it backwards, The Wrath of Grapes versus The Grapes of Wrath. And in that book, there's an adage that states, "The easiest way to create a small fortune in the wine business is to start with a large one." Greg doesn't have a large fortune. He's been struggling, trying to make this business work. Music is one of the ways that he's able to do that, because he is able to bring the community together to enjoy these bands, to enjoy the environment, and ultimately enjoy his wine. Wine is social, it's meant to be shared, and Naboo's a great place to do that. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any questions? Thank you. Kyle Rohrbach, followed by Anthony Akamasi.
Good evening, Planning Commission, I'm Kyle Rohrbach, I live in Thousand Oaks. A few things. First, as everyone has already said, Greg is one of our best small business owners in Thousand Oaks, and as he mentioned, it is affecting his business, which means that live music is, is a part of his economic model. And I can tell you, as a, as a frequent patron of Naboo, if he were to not be in business, it would take away from the value of the cultural community that we have in Thousand Oaks. It certainly would take away an opportunity for me and my friends to come hang out, and not necessarily just drink wine, but listen to music, have a place to be, and like everyone said, it's an incredible facility. If you haven't gone, encourage you to go. So, immediately in favor of, of you granting this permit to Greg, simply because of the kind of business owner that he is and the kind of place that he has created. Secondly, is, many of you know I'm the Vice Chair of TO Arts, which I'm speaking as an individual tonight, but at a lot of our meetings, we talk about the, the future of Thousand Oaks, we talk about downtown, we talk about bringing in a younger generation of people. That requires cultural vibrancy, that requires things like art, culture, music, and Greg has a great kind of attunement to what our community needs. So by voting in favor, you're also voting in favor of supporting our, our vibrant arts community, you're supporting musicians, you're supporting those singer-songwriters, you're supporting small business, and you're just supporting the proliferation of vibrancy in the arts. The third thing that I wanted to mention is, I had mentioned to somebody that I was coming to the Planning Commission tonight to speak on this topic, and when I described to them what we were talking about, they go, "That is so Thousand Oaks." The idea that, that we have to have a public hearing after listening to a really wonderful staff report that clearly took a lot of taxpayer time, research, money, so that one of our best small business owners can play music inside his facility in an industrial complex outside of normal business hours, not near homes or schools, is a little crazy to me. So, beyond granting the, the permit, I also implore all of you as Planning Commissioners, who, who I know, many of you personally, and the candidates and the, the city council members that appointed you and you've supported are proudly small business, we've got to find a better way. Because if, if Greg applied in March, and we're only having this public hearing now six months later, there, there's got to be a more efficient way to make sure that our small businesses are, are staying afloat. And I'm so happy that it sounds like Greg's gonna, gonna make it through this, and that 10 days from now, hopefully, we can be listening to music at Naboo, but I implore you to also just look at the bigger picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope, thank you. Anthony, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your last name.
Don't worry. Good evening, my name is Anthony Akamasi. I live in the city of Santa Clarita, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of my friend Greg Barnett. I want to talk about the kind of business owner Greg is. You know, when I first met Greg, his winery was three barrels, a glass top and some tables. I didn't see him again for another year and a half, but by the time I had come back, he had a full bar set up, he had tables, they completely transformed, and over the next couple of years, it continued to transform and, and started to encompass the live music. When COVID hit, you know, a lot of businesses went under. Greg refused to let his business fail. He was finding ways to make sure that his, his bills were getting paid, he had found ways to sell his wine, he was actively working within the confines that the government had provided to him to keep his business afloat. Once COVID was quote-unquote "over," there are still mandates of, of having your card to make sure you were vaxxed. Greg made sure that all of his customers were vaccinated, that he was in compliance with all the local laws, and that he was in compliance with all the state laws as well. Now, we're kind of back into that situation a little bit for Greg, with his inability to be able to produce the live music that is a staple of his business. He's, he works really well with the, with the singers, the songwriters, to get that business in, and it draws in additional customers. So with that said, you know, it's not just about Greg's business, he works with other businesses in the area. He brings in products from, from within the local area, he gets his merchandise through there, he gets his posters that way, he doesn't outsource it to China, he works with local businesses here. He works local events, he, he sets things up, he works with the local church, he works with the local vintners association, and on top of all that, he's an employer. He brings people from the local area into, to give them work, give them jobs, give them opportunities. With all that said, what is, what else has he done? Well, Greg's been voted the best wine bar multiple years in a row. Recently, he's put his wine out for multiple, excuse me, he's put them in multiple competitions. He recently received a Best In Class Wine grade. So Greg is reaching out to the community, it's time for the community to reach in and help Greg out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Heather Matthews, followed by Alric Bills.
Good evening, my name is Heather Matthews. First, I want to say thank you, I think it's Nicole, fantastic job, I really enjoyed that presentation. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak here, and thank you for all of those who've come to support Greg and Janet. Awesome. I've had the pleasure and privilege of being part of the musical community at Naboo Wines for almost two years now. Having a place to be able to perform and come support my brothers and sisters in this community has been a constant source of joy for me. Naboo hosts Sunday Night Live, a unique musical experience in which artists from all over Ventura and Los Angeles counties come together on the last Sunday of the month, and we perform a musical tribute with little to most often no practice. What happens on that last Sunday of the month is magical and beautiful, and everyone leaves better for the experience. So much love, support and encouragement goes into those evenings from the musical community and from the owners and staff at Naboo. They've created a safe place to stretch our musical talent in a warm and encouraging atmosphere that keeps you coming back to support the family of artists when their respective bands that they're part of come and perform at Naboo at different times. And we also go and support them at other locations around Ventura County as well. This fills a need in the community that we didn't know we had until we came for ourselves the first time and left with a feeling of belonging to this very special place. I've had the privilege of being on the Sunday Night Live Committee since last August, and I have absolutely loved serving the community and the talented artists, which are more like my family, and working alongside Greg to put together this truly fabulous night each month. Greg, Janet, Enrique and Heather are absolutely the best at what they do to serve our community with outstanding care, wonderful wine and a truly amazing venue to gather and celebrate wine, music and friendship. I look forward every month to our special night and to coming and supporting the bands that play there each weekend. It has been a lifeline for me over the last year as I dealt with my mother's cancer diagnosis and her passing in February. The Naboo Sunday Night Live musical community, several of whom are here tonight, absolutely blew me away as they rallied around me and provided the unconditional love and support when my children and I performed songs that I chose as tribute for my mom five days after she passed, at our Beatles tribute. It was such a special night and a memory I will never forget. We need Naboo. We need the live music that they have there. We need our artistic safe space. So many of us feel adrift right now without our musical family in one space. It is so much more than just a winery, it's home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Alric Bills, followed by Bram White.
I wanted to start by saying that Janet and Greg, our incredible business owners, were fortunate to know them. They are also neighbors. I'm a resident of West Hills, so not far from where they live in Woodland Hills. I have never lived out in Westlake Village, but I've worked out here for more than 10 years and spent a lot of time playing as a lifelong musician, performing in this area. And one thing that I was incredibly surprised by, just my first experience at Naboo Wines, was the surprised by, just my first experience at Naboo Wines, was the sense of family and community, and how on day one, my first performance there, I was welcomed with open arms, not just by Janet and Greg, but the entire musical community. And I was very impressed by that. Somebody said it, that this community does need Naboo. The power of music, the magnetic nature of it, to draw people together and connect all of us is incredible. Last year, I performed more live music, not just in this community, but just in all the Southern California area, as a result of all of the networking I made through all of the other musicians that perform at Naboo Wines. It would be an injustice, I think, to the community to not have this as a resource for live music. I've performed in, again, so many of the other venues here in the Westlake Village community, and none of them compare to what this wine bar offers. The fact that they are serving purely wine versus having food on their menu means that the draw of all the people in this community, they're coming and supporting local restaurants and bringing more business to this area. I don't know why that would not be something that you would want to continue. So, I'm here on behalf of so many people that support the restoration of this permit for Naboo Wines. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Bram White, followed by Stephen Mercer. Mr. White?
I believe he's on Zoom.
On Zoom? Ah, yes. Mr. White, are you there?
He seems to not be on. He's muted himself.
Okay. Let me, let me put him at the end, give him an opportunity. We'll then go to Stephen Mercer.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to say something on behalf of Greg, Janet, Enrique, and everybody at Naboo. I'm also a musician, and I played all over Los Angeles and Ventura County. And the one thing I want to say and stress is, theirs is one of the nicest places that I play and the bands I play with. You go in, it's clean, and it's modern, and it's just, it just feels like it's so well taken care of. And that's important to the people that come to see us. They feel comfortable and safe there. And the sound system is good. Everything they do is top-notch and nothing but good things. That's, that's really, everybody else has said so many great things. There's not too much else to say, but they definitely get 10 out of 10 from me. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, let us see if Mr. White is on. If not, I think we'll have to pass that in the...
He's unmuted, but not speaking.
But not speaking?
He is unmuted.
Okay. I think we'll, we'll wrap up the public speakers. Just for everybody's notice, there are 11 speaker cards, all in favor. Next, we'll go back to staff for any follow-up comments.
No additional follow-up comments. Thank you.
All right, that's quick. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Bus?
So, as one of the public speakers brought up the timeline for the approval of this, so can you speak to what that process is and why it's from March to now?
Absolutely. So, since this is a Planning Commission level approval, there are some additional noticing requirements that are not as prevalent in other types of more administrative or other discretionary types of projects. So, in this case, not only do we have the additional two-week, we call it the Notice of Hearing period, but we have to post Notice of Application signage for 45 days. So, that takes up a significant chunk of time. So, we did that pretty promptly upon receipt of the application. I believe we have it in our recitals. And in the recitals of our proposed resolution, we do provide a high-level overview of how this application progressed, our process. We were committed to handling it in the most timely manner as possible. However, as part of this review, not only of us as planning have to take a look at it, we do, we need to do our due diligence and distribute to other departments and agencies. And as part of that process, there were some questions and some items that needed to be addressed from the fire department. So, that did take some time during that process, which could contribute to some of that, that lag there. But the applicant was very committed to handling those in as prompt a manner as possible, but handling those in a very, in a sufficient manner as well. So, he took his time with that as well. So, we appreciate that. But all in all, we were committed to processing this as timely as possible. However, we are constrained with some requirements in municipal code that require enhanced noticing procedures, which are timely.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, that's it. The applicant, you have five minutes of rebuttal if you would like to come back. You don't, you don't have to. It's all, it's all to you. As far, you have it if you'd like. If you could just restate your name and city of residence.
Owner of Naboo Wines, and I just want to say thank you for everybody who came and spoke for us. That means so much to me and Janet, and it's great to hear all your words. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions? Final questions of the applicant. Thank you. At this time, I will end up calling, closing the public hearing and open the floor for discussion and/or a motion by Sheriff Tyler Kettlehead.
I'm having problems with the microphone tonight. I don't need it really, but, so I want to riff a little bit on what Kyle Rohrbach, what Mr. Rohrbach said. And, and I appreciate, Kara, that you, you asked the question about why it took so long, because that was something that I addressed with Mr. Barnett when we spoke. And I, I agree with Mr. Rohrbach. I think our, our staff is great. You're bound by municipal codes. You're bound by the law. So, you can only do what you can do. But I think kind of, I think it's incumbent upon us, again, we're not a, we're not a lawmaking body. We're just basically, we look at the four corners of the document, and we, we work with that. You guys work with a municipal code. So, I'm just going to throw something out here that, because Don Lanson's not here, that I, I think it's incumbent upon us to talk to our city council people, the people who appointed us, and find out why things like this can't be more ministerial. You know, because, again, the staff was bound by the regulations that they have. And so, I think it's incumbent upon us. I know in LA, they have cabaret permits that you can, that you can literally do at, you know, at a desk. And so, the fact that it has to come through us, and that it's impacted his business in such a, I mean, this is, this is not a little, this is not a little consequence, this business. This has been a major, major blow to his business. And so, I think it's incumbent upon us to talk to our city council people and see what we can do about it. Doesn't help them, but I, I do appreciate the Barnetts being so patient with us, understanding that you had great staff people working with you, and that we're bound by the laws. And they kind of suck. So, I think it's time we unsuck them.
Any, any further comments? Motion would be great.
I was just going to remind the Commission that we do have a zoning code update that is in the works, and that is the time to bring all of these issues up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, I will move that we find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, existing facilities, and approve the special use permit allowing scheduled indoor live entertainment consisting of band, comedy, DJ, and karaoke performances between the hours of 8:00 PM and 11:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, at an existing 3,097-square-foot winery and tasting room, Naboo Wines, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in the resolution. And I just want to just say, little editorializing, I think it's wonderful that you got so much support. So many people came out to support you. It's Monday. It's late in the day, and all these people came to support you, and I think that's wonderful. So, that's it.
Great. Any comments on the motion? I share Commissioner McMahon's enthusiasm for having, having this approved, so I'll be in favor of the motion. Any final comments before we ask for a vote?
Commissioner Bus?
Approve.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyler Kettlehead?
Yes.
Sheriff Ferris?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Commissioner Lanson absent.
Okay, thank you. And any agreed party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. Thanks. Okay, let's continue, because I think we can get this done pretty quick. We have no department reports this evening. Now's the time for Commission comments and/or any AB 1234 reports. Are there any comments from our fellow commissioners? Nope. Okay. Ms. Elia Meliker, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Yes. Tomorrow evening, the Community Development Department has no items on the city council agenda. However, on October 7th, we will have a proclamation for Code Compliance Month, and a public hearing on the building code update to adopt and amend the triannual state codes. On October 21st, the Community Development Department will have a proclamation for Planning Month, yay, and a public hearing for an appeal of the Canejo Summit Project, and second reading of the building code update on the consent calendar. For Planning Commission items, there are no items scheduled to date for October 6th and October 22nd. And on November 22nd, there will be a public hearing on removal of a tree causing damage to a single-family residence at 2183 King Cross Court. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all. We'll now adjourn to the next meeting on October 6, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.